I'd like to call this meeting to order today of our November the 2nd, 2022 joint meeting with the school board. Welcome everybody here today, the people that are in the audience and anybody that's in the virtual world.
All right.
The Board of Supervisors and the School Board will conduct their joint quarterly meeting today, Wednesday, November the 2nd at 5:30 at the new courthouse. Joint quarterly meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. Meeting ID 876-0855-3306. One tap mobile 1646-931-3860 or 876-0855-3306. If not, you can find your local number. All right? The meeting will now come to order. We have established a call, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Well, our first item on the agenda is a discussion with the School Board, so we can have a joint discussion here. Dr. Walgro, you want to start off?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Haney. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
So I provided each supervisor and School Board member with a packet, and we're just going to quickly go through the packet because we wanted to give you a broad overview of highlights for the school year so far. So I'm going to start on page two, and you will see that beside me to my right is our new Director of Finance, Mrs. Tara Booth, and we welcome her here this evening. In all reality, Shelley Van Lanningham, who's our acting finance director, had planned to be here to present with me. She unfortunately could not make it, so Tara was kind enough and brave enough to say, "Yeah, sure, I'll be here and I'll be part of this presentation." Tara's first official day will be this coming Monday, so we welcome her here this evening. You know, I shared with Tara that she will find our supervisors to be very supportive of our school division, and I think you will be very pleased with Tara as well. Her background, she began as an accounting major, and she attended George Mason University, where she earned a bachelor's degree in middle education. She also completed her master's degree in interdisciplinary studies with a focus in mathematics and science from the Virginia Commonwealth University, VCU. And finally, she attended the George Washington University, where she studied educational leadership and administration, and she holds an education specialist degree from GW. Mrs. Booth also has a Division Superintendent license, and this is her 30th, 31st year in public education. She has served as a principal, an instructional coordinator, a school improvement coach, a classroom teacher, and she's on the Planning Commission. I believe she's been on the Planning Commission for 21 years, if I have that right, in Lancaster County. So, welcome to Tara. And Tara, I don't know if there was anything you would like to share?
I'm just looking forward to working with you, and I'm glad to be part of this team.
All right. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So everyone has their nameplates. Tara, on the left, you'll see our supervisors; on the right, you've met our School Board. And then we have our county administrator, Mr. Tablock. We have Tru, the Assistant County Administrator, and we have Morgan, who is the clerk for the supervisors. I'm not sure. Tell us your official title, Morgan.
The Executive Assistant.
The Executive Assistant, very well. So thank you for that. We're going to proceed to slide three, and we're going to go through some of these quickly because it's just, you know, it's information, but we don't have to spend a lot of time on these. So if you look at page three, you will see the full-time student enrollment by grade, gender, and ethnicity, and you will see our total enrollment currently for the 2022-2023 school year is holding at 1,200 students. And if we proceed to slide four, this shares with you the division-level summary of students who are served in regional centers. So at the very top row, you'll see our Chesapeake Bay Governor's School Student Participants. We have 26 students participating in CBGS. The second row features Northern Neck Regional Alternative Program. We have one student who's currently attending. And then the third and fourth row deal, draw attention to our Northern Neck Technical Center Participation, and those last two rows show a total of 48 student participants. The eight students in the third row, actually, they're split between the Agriculture Program and the Maritime Studies Program, and all of the other students are enrolled in the other programs such as Cosmetology, Electricity, all of the programs that are offered. If we move on to page five, I'm going to have Tara pick up here for page five.
It's on page five, we have enrollment by school. So Northumberland Elementary has 541 students. Northumberland Middle has 276 students, and Northumberland High School has 388 students.
The page is off, my mouse.
Oh, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So...
You said page five. You're talking about, you really should be on six.
Okay, page six. Did we do that one yet?
We have not.
Okay. Tara?
So page six is a school-level summary of economically disadvantaged students. So you'll see that at Northumberland Elementary, we have 309 students; at the middle school, 156 students; and at Northumberland High School, 222 students.
Oh. And please know that when we talk about economically disadvantaged students, our school division, as you know, participates in the community eligibility provision, which means all students have breakfast and lunches free of charge. So that's all 1,200 students who are able to participate free of charge in our school lunch and breakfast program. All right. If we look at page seven, and I appreciate you guys, make sure I stay on track of my page numbers.
It's different on the computer.
Yeah, on the iPad, I think it kind of looks both ways. Full-time school-aged students with disabilities or 504 accommodations are featured on page seven, and you can see at the elementary school, we have a total of 83 students who either have the disability or a 504 accommodation. Please keep in mind at the elementary school, a lot of times our elementary students qualify for speech and language services, which, once given that intervention, they graduate quickly from that program. At the middle school, we have 47 students with either a disability or a 504, and at the high school, we have 30, or I'm sorry, 92 students at the high school with either a disability or a 504. Below that, in case you're wondering what the acronyms to the top of the chart stand for, I'll just use column one as an example, AUT. That's autism. And then if you work your way across, you can see DB is death or blind, developmental delay, et cetera. I'm going to pause briefly here in case you have any questions so far. All right, so we're going to move on to page eight.
So on page eight, you'll see the English Learner Students by Grade. All of the English language students in Northumberland are Spanish-speaking, and there are a total of 38 students in the division.
So the acronym for this used to be ELL, and now the new acronym is EL for English Learner. So if you, you know, when you spoke of ELL, now it has morphed into English Learner. All right, page nine deals with funding.
So page nine is the pre-K experience for students. So Virginia Preschool Initiative, we have 34 students enrolled. In the special education preschool, we have five students identified, and then for Title I, there are 19 students identified.
And that gives us a total of 58 students participating in pre-K currently for the school year. All right, I'm on page 10, and this is a summary of military connected counts. So it shows you that the, if a student has an active-duty parent or guardian, it just gives you information on that. So for active duty within all of our schools, we have nine students. For reserve, any parent or guardian participating in the reserves, we have four total students. And for National Guard, we have five. And some of these families, you know, they may have a child at the middle in the high, or they could have a child at the elementary in the middle. So just thought you might be interested in looking at the data that way. For page 11, this deals with ADM.
So right now, the ADM for Northumberland is 1,200 students, and our projected ADM was actually lower than that at 1,116, so we're in a good place.
And the ADM used for the budget does not include pre-K students, so for that 1,200, we'd have to back out 58 students at this time. We do base our ADM off of March numbers, so right now, you know, obviously, it's early November, but I wanted to give you a snapshot of that. Okay, I think we're on page 12, and for the audience across the front here and for our supervisors, if you haven't had a chance to see the big posters of the new construction project, they're here in front of you for you to see. And as you know, the School Board and the Board of Supervisors approved a design-build contract with Conamara Corporation, and that's for new construction of a JROTC system and athletic building. And so that came with a fixed lump sum price of $1,693,992. And if you go to page 13, you'll see that digital snapshot of a site plan for you, and this is a standalone building. It does have two classrooms and one big space that can be used for athletics or JROTC drill, et cetera. The two classrooms have an expandable wall, so it can be drawn back in case we want to use that space as one bigger area. I did talk with Stanley, who is, you know, our contractor at Conamara, and he's the owner, and he said that he expects permitting information by this coming Friday, and he'll be working with the county office early next week. I just received that message today. He also indicated that they were expecting delivery of the, you know, the building, pieces of the building. He was expecting that in January, and he feels that we might actually receive that in December, which is good news. And we do plan on having a groundbreaking type of ceremony, and we'd love to have each of you join us for that. All right, I'm going to move on to slide 14, or page 14. This is different funding that has been provided to Northumberland. It is new construction, it's a new construction grant program, and Northumberland County Public Schools has received $1,134,172. And this calculation, I have an explanation of that for you, but it's based on our local composite index, which is .6971. It's also tied into our ADM. There was an average ADM KELP used by the state, and that resulted in that award of Working with our five-member School Board, they have given me direction to be working on technical specifications for a new School Board office, which would be built on academic lane, and we would be trying to keep within that, this amount that has been allocated, And so if we go to page 15, that's just a basic description for you in case you didn't see, that based on amendments adopted by the 2022 Special Session, General Assembly to the 2022-2024 Biennial is introduced in House Bill 30, all school divisions received a base of $1 million allocation in the funding formula, with remaining funds distributed to the school division on the basis of weighted ADM and obviously, LCI. So that gives you a little bit of information there. And we're going to move to page 16, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Booth if she'll pick up.
So on slide 16, you'll see that we have grants here through the CARES Act, through special education and facilities. Several of them are completed, and then there are a couple that are still pending.
And so this run, this takes you through pages 16, 17, and 18, I believe.
17 and 18 have information on the SR grants.
If we go to page 19, this is a current list of the Director of Facilities and Maintenance's project reports, and I'm starting on page 19. We have transitioned to Ambrose for trash removal, that's 100% complete. The NES roof, roof rock dispersal, when we replaced the roof at NES, all of the rocks that had been on that flat roof were removed, and so we're using those for landscaping, erosion prevention, et cetera. So Mr. Brand indicated that that project is approximately 50% complete. For the NES well replacement, Mr. Brand has been communicating with Mrs. Julie White from the Virginia Department of Health, and she's also the well water math instructor at Virginia Tech. He indicates that, you know, they're looking for grant opportunities, and he said that is 20% complete. We received bus...
Can I make an interruption for just a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you notice that Mr. Hooper donated the asphalt repair?
Yes.
We need to really do something. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I'm glad of him to do that.
And that was difficult to find somebody who could do that repair, so it was very generous. Mary?
So I'm on page 19. I'm looking at the bus garage roof quotes. My understanding is the supervisors had asked me to move forward with trying to see quotes for that roof repair, because we do know that the water is impacting the electricity, et cetera. It is a safety situation at our bus garage. So the, we do have four quotes. I'm going to run through those. Again, they're featured on page 19. Twin Rivers Roofing and Construction gave us a quote of $85,575 for a metal standing seam roof. Colonial Roofing quoted $91,750 for a TPO flat roof. Conamara quoted $167,760 for a 24-gauge standing seam metal roof. And finally, Conamara also came in at $225,000 for new construction of a pitched roof. Right now, that roof is a flat roof. In speaking with Mr. Brand, he is supportive of the Twin Rivers Roofing, the cost at $85,575, and we would need guidance from the supervisors for how to proceed on that capital improvement project, and that's at the roof at the bus garage.
What gauge metal was on that roof?
He did not give me the, that metal standing seam. He felt like it was comparable with the 24-gauge, but I can get that for you, Mr. Haney. I think that 24...
I just don't want you to put anything too thin on it.
Right. The 24-gauge had a fancy name from Conamara, and Jeff said, well, you know, he just said that he felt it was very much in line with what Twin Roofers, or Twin Rivers Roofing had quoted.
Probably going to be like a 26-gauge is probably what it's going to be, which is fine.
Okay.
That will...
Good question. Thanks for that. The athletic field maintenance is ongoing. I'm just going to kind of like go to, he also, like, once again, listed the bus garage shop roof issues, but he indicated, Mr. Brand indicated, that if the roof were repaired or, you know, replaced, that the bus garage shop roof issues that it's causing, that would be taken care of all at once when the roof is replaced. I want to talk about that middle school, high school building control system upgrade. As you know, we signed into a contract with Honeywell to replace the existing middle and high school building control system with a new JACE N4 system. Honeywell has assigned a contract rep, and the next progress meeting is scheduled for, actually, they just had one this past week, so please excuse that date. Honeywell has also informed us that there is an excessive lead time for arrival of parts from the factory. There still is a supply chain issue going on, so they are waiting on some of these parts. I know Mr. Brand has been working closely with Joyce from Honeywell to track that progress. I'm going to page 21, I believe, if I'm still with you on those page numbers. I wanted to talk about the NES flooring replacement, which is in the second row on page 21. You know that our elementary school is about 25 years old, and we have 25-year-old carpet in a lot of our learning spaces, which means that our carpet is frayed, it's dirty. We do try to clean it, but at the same time, it's gotten to the age that when you, even when you try to clean it, it's decomposing really due to age. So this past summer, we did a full LVT replacement, which is luxury vinyl tiles. So we did a full LVT replacement in the kindergarten pods as well as the first grade. And we would definitely love to have you visit us if you haven't done that, to see the LVT. We actually had toured the new Westmoreland High School, and that's where the LVT concept came from. It was affordable, but it also has a, you know, it wears well. With that said, Jeff asked me this evening to request $200,000 for fiscal year '23-'24 to replace the carpeted areas with LVT in the four remaining pods, and this would be second, third, fourth, and fifth grade pods. Jeff's concern is, he said, "Well, the problem with kind of like our timeline is that these projects really have to happen first thing in the summer. June, July is our window. We have an early August start date." And, you know, due to maybe the way the budget is approved, sometimes that's a very late approval date, and you have to lock in with the company to secure your summer install.
I understand, yeah.
And schools, like, we just don't have that flexibility to, unless we know we have the funding, that's when we can start scheduling. So he is projecting $200,000 on that, and he just said very respectfully, "Will you please explain why we would need that funding sooner rather than later, because we'd want to lock the company in to do the install?" Next on this list, you can see the football field press box window. That had, it shattered this year, and we have been working on a full replacement of the windows. We have identified a heat, heating and cooling situation there. We do plan to install a mini-split in that press box, and that will protect our electronics, our equipment. And, you know, when you go in there right now, the heat is so intense in the press box without climate control that the walls are peeling, and it's just that heat is affecting different things. So he is projecting, he's working on that right now, and he's projecting a total cost of $10,000. Next, you have the football field and the bleacher welder repairs. Those are all complete, 100% completion with that. We have gone through our backflow preventer inspection, which prevents any contaminated water from running back into the NES well. That project, too, is 100% complete. We continue working on, and right now, I'm on page 22. We continue to work on our LED lighting upgrades, and this right now is 45% complete. On our list of projects, we have the parking lot curb painting as well as the bus garage fuel tank painting. Both of these projects so far are 0% complete, though they are on our list, and, you know, they are a priority to us. Next, you'll see the middle school, high school exterior walkway repairs. There was a complaint filed through the Virginia Occupational Safety and Health Administration. We have fully worked with VASH, and they have approved that Northumberland County Public Schools, we need to remedy that situation. What has happened is there are some concrete pavers that have settled in the walkway, exterior walkway areas of the middle and high school, so we are working on fixing that situation, and we do have signage up until that is fixed. At the bottom of page 22, you will see the elementary school security grant. As a school division, we have requested $240,000, and that would be applied for a security grant that could possibly fund the installation of a shelter security lockdown system at NES. We have that feature at the middle school and the high school. Due to the age of the elementary, you know, that wasn't something that was necessarily put in 25 years ago. It's a very common thing to have, and we are pursuing that grant funding to cover that cost. I'm going to move to page 23. You'll see a facilities blind upgrade, and this is, we had for each classroom door at the middle school and the high school, there are glass panels in those doors, and during a lockdown, we have blinds that are secured so that you cannot see in those classrooms, which is a best practice, and it's safe for our students and staff. Over time, our blinds have become older, and the spring mechanism was not functioning properly, so we are replacing all of those blinds currently, and we're, you know, I think they're very close to completion with that piece of the blind project. At the elementary school, they had a fire marshal visit. We had a fire marshal visit at the elementary school who identified an area that we needed to address, which was our exterior window coverings. The exterior window coverings have to be fire-rated for a public school building, and so we are in the process of purchasing, and then we will be installing these blinds on all exterior windows at the elementary school. And then next, you'll see the Virginia Department of Health Waterworks Inspection is 100% complete. Next, you have the bus garage lift replacement. The current lift is damaged, and we ordered this quite a while ago, but due to the supply chain shortage, we're still waiting to receive that lift. The same goes true with the bus garage bay door replacement. We ordered those a while ago, too. These doors are on back order as well, and that's due to age of that building. Those, whether it's the lift or the garage bay doors, everything gets inspected, so, you know, we had guidance that we needed to address those areas. And we continue to work with Mr. Tablock with the sewage plant, you know, the project that the supervisors are working on to address those issues.
All right, so that takes us to page 24, and I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Booth. So on October 7th, 2022, the Department of Education released a superintendent's memo stating that there was federal money available to give $1,000 to all full-time employees and bus drivers, and $500 for part-time contracted employees. And that money is federally funded through the SR grant, and it would go to all employees who are on the payroll in December, so no local funds would be used for that.
They did a KELP tool, so they looked at our standards of SOQ positions, and that money was up-fronted, and then the division to do that bonus across all employees, that total came to approximately $80,000 that will come from federal monies, not local monies. And our surrounding neighbors of Westmoreland, Colonial Beach, Essex, Richmond County, and Lancaster, they plan to do something very similar, if not, some of them are doing a little bit more.
All right, next, I'm on page 25, and the supervisors had asked me to, about buses, and the need for our school division is 177-passenger school bus...
and the need for our school division is 177-passenger school bus and one special education school bus. We have quotes for you this evening, which I've also shared with Mr. Tadlock, and Kingmore comes in with the lower quote for a total of $233,993, and that's for the passenger bus plus the special education bus, or students with disabilities bus. We would need some direction on how you wish to proceed with that.
Any difference between the two brands of buses, or is it just mainly price?
You know, I talked to our Director of Transportation about that. She was very comfortable going with Kingmore for that lower cost. She was not, you know, it sounded like they were pretty consistent with what we were purchasing. She did want me to reiterate. You can see her little asterisk at the bottom. Transportation would prefer one special education and one passenger bus. This is where our greatest need lies. All right, next on page 26, we have present employment opportunities. So there are currently seven positions open in Northumberland County Public Schools. There's a secondary agriculture science education teacher, a speech-language pathologist, a federal grant-funded elementary special education teacher for this current '22, '23 school year, a secondary computer literacy and keyboarding teacher, a high school Spanish or other world language teacher, a paraprofessional for middle, high school social studies and science, and a paraprofessional for secondary agriculture science, and also the PACE program, the Practical Assessment Exploration Systems. And these are all located on our website, and in order to be considered for a position, applicants do need to go through the online application system. It's very user-friendly, and if anyone has questions, I'm happy to provide the link, and we're always happy at the school board office to provide assistance in completing those applications. And finally, if you look at pages 27, 28, and 29, these are, this is our accreditation report that we received for the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, and it shows that all of our schools are fully accredited, which we're very, very proud of. We continue to work hard in addressing student learning needs and student learning not lost, excuse me, that occurred during the pandemic. The slides we've presented to you, for the most part, come directly from official reports that we, you know, we turn these into the Department of Education. I like to snapshot those for you, because I think, you know, it shows you a more transparent picture of all of these topics. And, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I conclude our updates. I hope it wasn't too long. I wanted to make sure we were comprehensive.
No, it was a very good report. A lot of information in here. I'll have a chance to go through it and kind of let it sink in a little bit later, but it was very nicely done.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions?
Mr. Hooper donated time and materials. When somebody does something like that, do y'all send them a letter or a call?
Yes, and a lot of times our school board will do something publicly at their meeting. Their next meeting is in November, I believe. It's the 14th, Monday, the 14th. And sometimes the supervisors, you know, sometimes the two boards do something.
That's what I was getting to. Mr. Chairman, I think the board also, part of thank Mr. Hooper for his time and materials for going down and fixing the place at the school.
I think that would be a good idea.
And I got one more thing. We need to further that discussion in the next board meeting in regards to the roof for the bus shop. You got water running in walls, running on electrical components, and, you know, moisture builds up, you're going to have mold and mildew. So we want this building to continue to deteriorate, have safety issues, possible in the future, health issues. We need to have Mr. Brand here, and let's further some discussion on this roof. Let's see if we can't move forward and see what we need to do.
All right, well, we got a board meeting next week, and I would certainly think Mr. Brand would be able to come, as long as it's okay with you.
Absolutely. I can invite him.
Okay.
I'm not sure what his schedule is, but I will let you know. I should be able to let Morgan know tomorrow.
Okay. That would be fine if he can come.
Okay.
And get the gauge metal that Tri-Rivers is thinking about doing. Then you have a little more apples-to-apples comparison.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, you know, if you're getting 30-gauge, you want to stay away from that.
Okay.
That's a little bit too thin. You need something a little bit thicker.
Okay. Since we're on the subject of a roof, if you don't mind, could y'all give us the progress of the roof over on the bank building that houses our school board office?
Sure. We've had the engineer, Dave Leibel, with HDH Associates. He's been back to the facility there, and he is currently drafting up the construction documents, and we hope to have those December, January timeframe. He is working on those as we speak.
What's a timeline of maybe getting it completed?
Once we get the construction documents, which we don't have a firm timeframe, that we're looking at December, January timeframe, we would go out to bid, which he is on contract to help us with that bidding process. So we would hope to be in a position, early spring timeframe, to award that contract, if not sooner. And then from there, it's going to depend on the contractor as far as their timeframe as to when they can get to the project.
So we're still probably looking at another year?
Depending on the contractor and materials. We don't know what the status of that would be. The board did ask that to go back with what was currently there, which is the low-slope roof replacement there.
And I just sent Mr. Brand the message about the November 10 Board of Supervisors meeting, so I'll let everyone know.
Okay. All right. Any other board members have any questions? Tadlock, you have any questions on anything? All right. Very nicely done. Appreciate the report. You got a lot of information in there.
Thank you.
I have one question. Obviously, some cities, like especially Richmond, raised about their test scores being weighed down. The information you presented is the similar type stuff what they were looking at.
Say that again, Tommy, the last part.
Richmond obviously has had a big decline during the pandemic.
Yes.
And that raised serious issues. That type of reporting isn't what you have in here, right?
Well, this is our official reporting that's given to us by the Department of Education. So I do know that the new governor, Governor Yonkin, as well as the DOE Superintendent of Public Instruction, Gillian Ballow, it seems to me they're really looking at the NAEP scores, and somehow there, there was, they did a sample group from school divisions. It's a sample. It wasn't all students had to test. For the SOL, all students have to, are required to take the test. But apparently, the NAEP was, you know, done by sample, and the NAEP is not corresponding with the SOLs, and so there is some criticism about that that's occurring. I just came back from Richmond yesterday where they were discussing that. So I do think the new administration is taking a look at the standards of learning. I'm not sure what the, what they're going to do with the NAEP test, the NAEP assessment. It's the National Assessment of Educational Progress is what that crazy acronym stands for, and, you know, from my perspective, I will do whatever the Department of Education wants us to do. I'm very proud of what our teachers have done during the pandemic and post-pandemic. I'm proud of our families. I'm proud of our kids. Those times weren't easy, as we all know, but to receive full accreditation, that's, that's big. So I'm very proud of that, and again, I'll do whatever the Board of Education wants, requires us to do, because that's our job, to support them. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. So you, you are not, other words, put it another way, you are not part of the NAPs, the NAEPs assessment process, were you?
I cannot say that. I, you know, we could have had a small group who participated. I know I was talking to another superintendent, and they had, you know, it just happened that the random selection for their school division, you know, a lot of the kids in it were perhaps not, they were 100%. It was just, it was almost like the sampling on that. It's possible the scores weren't truly representative of the SOLs, because SOLs test all children. And the way the NAEP assessment was rolled out wasn't that you had to test 100% of your students in your school division. So, you know, that's my question of the comparison. And by the way, I have the deepest respect for, you know, whomever the governor is and whomever, you know, is in what the superintendent of public instruction is. I will support whatever they would like us to do, so. But that's, that's kind of like, there is some information coming from Richmond and the Department of Ed, as well as the governor's office criticizing public education and the Commonwealth.
I remember what Mark Twain said about statistics, too.
Yeah. Great question.
All right. Anyone else, anyone else have any questions?
Do we want to set the next date for the quarterly meeting?
Certainly can.
Would it be March?
March might.
Oh, March is four months. Was it three or four months?
Usually three months, but.
Three is February, November, December, January, February.
February.
What time do you usually give us a report on your budget?
I feel like we're going to be meeting a lot at that time, so, I mean, that's up to the two boards. If you, if you want to have another meeting like this, I do think we're going to be in the middle of budget meetings, so.
Yeah, you should be.
It's totally up to the two boards, if you want to just roll into budget meetings, or if you want to keep these meetings as well.
Doesn't make any difference to me, and I don't know if it makes any difference to the rest of the board members or not.
Are you saying combine the two? Yeah. Because I feel like they're going to be redundant. Yeah.
That would put you in March, if I, if I'm correct. I may be wrong now.
Well, I'd like to stick with February if possible.
February. We'll stick with February.
And I'm open to dates if you.
All right.
I'm looking at last February, and I don't see any where we met together.
We presented our budget probably around March 9.
Yeah, it was first of March.
But I'm hoping with our new finance director on board that we're going to try to pitch a budget sooner. I think that's good for everyone.
Yeah, it was March 10 when we met with the Board of Supervisors.
What does the 22nd look like? February 22nd.
I think the 22nd looks good. It's open.
What does February 22nd look like?
Okay.
Did you say the 22nd or the 2nd?
22nd.
Or February.
Same time, 5:30?
Yes, sir.
That may not be good, but.
We could make a placeholder, and then if anything changes, we can regroup.
Sarah, you say it's not convenient with you?
No, I'll be in Ireland.
Well, let's get a second date then.
Well, let me make sure. I'll just, I think you should plan it, and I'll call you from there.
Yeah, you call in.
Who knows what time you'd have to call in, though? I'm not going to play that game with that. Forward, backward, sideways.
We'll kind of, kind of keep it to that. If something changes.
That's fine.
Yes.
Like 5:30?
What day is that?
22nd, February 22nd.
5:30.
2023 at 5:30.
George Washington's birthday.
That's what I told him.
When is Ash Wednesday?
That's, that's Ash Wednesday.
I'll be here Ash Wednesday.
Yeah.
Then we leave the next day.
Yeah.
So I'll be here.
Okay.
All right.
I do have a question. What is the status of the Lutzberg School Building?
Yeah, actually, we were waiting on a survey, some additional information, and we've got some additional information for the board tonight, and hopefully, we're getting close to resolving that matter.
Has it been surveyed?
It has been.
That's completed? Okay.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, you're always cordially welcome to come to any of our meetings and see some of our great teachers and kids. We'd love to have you there.
All right. If we don't have any more questions for the school board here, or Dr. Warrow, or Tara Booth, our next item on the agenda is the tourism ARPA funds budget. Mr. Tadlock?
Ms. Chairman, I don't know if the school board is welcome to stay. I didn't know if they wanted to close their meeting, or.
Do any of your members have any questions for the board, for the supervisors, anybody?
I asked mine, so I'm fine.
Everybody ask whatever you want it. Okay, then if you, if it's okay with you, we'll adjourn our meeting.
Yes, ma'am, if you want to adjourn.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. All right. If we're ready to get back to it, we'll let Mr. Tadlock take over on the tourism ARPA funds budget.
Yes, sir. This is just a brief. We've had several members working on the ARPA tourism. Mr. Bob Bullard, Executive Director for the Economic Development Commission, been working with Lisa Hall and Drew Basie, has been working with that committee as well, and Teresa Lambert. And they've put together, the board had requested some additional information as to what was, what the monies were planning on being used, or how they were being used. And this just kind of gives a synopsis of the type of funding they are looking at putting this money towards, as paid media, marketing production, and tourism product development. That's kind of just an overview and the amounts that each of those in the budget breakdown, you can see what, where they're looking to have each of those monies fall. I don't know if you have any specific questions. We are looking to try and get this, the application submitted, so that we can start utilizing some of the funds. But again, didn't know if the board had any questions, if the board was okay with this to move forward with submitting the application.
All right, and board members have any questions? Mr. Tadlock? No one got any questions?
No.
No.
What do you need from, from us, Mr. Tadlock?
Just the, they're okay to move forward in submitting the application for these monies.
So moved. Did they move second? For the application.
All right. We got a motion and a second to move forward with the application. Any other, excuse me, any other discussion? Any other, excuse me, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, all right. Have anything else, Mr. Tadlock?
Not for open meeting, yes, sir.
All right, we don't have anything else on the agenda for open meeting. Our next item is to convene in a closed meeting. Mr. Tadlock, do you have the appropriate wordage for that, or verbiage for that?
Yes, sir. I need the board supervisors to convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, and Section 2.23711A3, for the discussion or consideration of potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the potential disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, assistant county administrator, because they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia for you, Section 2.23712F.
I move with Mr. Tadlock, red.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into a closed meeting now. Thank you all for coming.
The mayor may not make actions after we come back, as you know.
Yep. Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we need a roll call motion.
Yeah, I just need the motion for the Northumberland Board of Supervisors to return to public meeting and certify by a roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
So moved that motion.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
Second, we've got a motion, second. All right, Ronnie?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, you have anything else?
I just.
That's not on the agenda?
Just need the board to take action on those two items.
All right. Which one are you going to do first?
The hiring of the sanitary district employee, Patrick Pomiano, retroactive November 1st with a salary of $34,532.57.
So moved, second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 And the second item is for the interim chief, interim chief position, Darren Colley, with the hourly rate, if the board is okay with that, that particular rate.
And how many hours would you anticipate a, a week, I guess it is?
Well, per week, it would not be, it would go over the 29 hours per week, 120 a month.
I believe we approve them at the rate you suggested, up to the, the amount that keeps us under the health insurance piece.
At the 32.50.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. All right, Jimmy, second it. All right.
Long, 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 it's been seconded.
All right, I'm sorry. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have.
Second, Ronnie's motion.
Motion to adjourn?
It's already been made. Ronnie made it, I seconded.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. In other words, this train's running.